I'd like to go ahead and bring the Tuesday, April 5th, 2016 Board of Alderman, Warrington Board of Alderman meeting to open. If you would rise for pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we dig into this, we do have one item that was on the agenda that we did remove. I want everybody to be aware of that. It would be the, I believe, item 11A, which would be the health insurance renewal. It will be placed on the next meeting's agenda. Just need to gain a little more information before we carry on with that. First item on the agenda would be the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are the ways and means, meeting minutes from March 15th, 2016, the regular meeting minutes from March 15th, 2016, the executive session minutes from March 15th, 2016, the work session minutes from March 28th, 2016, the monthly economic development report, and the monthly finance report.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dreyer, seconded by Alderson Holly. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item in the agenda will be hearing from the public. We ask that you keep your comments to a five-minute maximum, and that you step to the podium, and how tall you are, and the reason you're here. You can do so at this time. All right, not seen anyone, move on. Next item in the agenda will be Board of Alderman comments. Anyone?
I actually do. Since we don't go over the actual items in the consent agenda amongst the regular meeting, I'd like to make a comment about Michelle's economic development report. There is a ton of activity on that report for this month, and it's very impressive. And you can tell the economy is turning around by some of the things we're seeing on that report. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. I'll keep mine short and sweet. I hope everybody got out and voted. Very important that you exercise your right to do that. And we'll see how things turn out, but I'm pretty excited to, after here, going up there and see what's going on in the administration building. Next item would be the approval to promote Timothy Quinn to water supervisor at $44,400 annual salary. Want to speak on that?
That we promoted Jim, Tim Rusty left, and we've been, Tim's got all the qualifications and been working on getting him up to par, so he'll be a good fit.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments? All right, I entertain a motion to promote Timothy Quinn to water supervisor at the amount of $44,400 for an annual salary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Deloitte, seconded by Alderson Kesslerly. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda will be the approval for, approval of liquor license by the Drink Liquor License for Downtown Pub and Grill LLC located at 101 Boonsuck Road. Any comments or questions on those? Any comments, questions on here? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor by the Drink Liquor License for Downtown Pub and Grill LLC located at 101 Boonsuck Road.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dreyer, seconded by Alderson Holly. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next item in general would be Paint the Town Purple. I know we have a group here. Do you guys like to come forward to the podium, just state who you are?
I'm Talia Scott. We're here with Relay for Life.
I'm Lizzie Dixon.
And we were just requesting permission to put the ribbons on the poles again this year from August 1st to August 31st. Relay's going to be August 27th, and also for the track signs that we did last year along 47. We already know all the guidelines and everything, so.
There you go. Prepare the questions.
I'm just saying, well, Brad's not here, is he? He usually wants to ask the questions. But since you know the guidelines, and we have done this in the past. You guys have any questions or comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Paint the Town Purple and allow the purple ribbons on the white poles from August 1st to August 31st of 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Next item in the agenda will be hearing from our Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is just a question regarding your desire to move forward with the annexation of that portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway that we have referred to in the past as No Man's Land. This is the area that is from the southern part of the roadway from the center line south to where the northern edge of Truceville's boundary would be. This runs from Powell out to where the state maintenance begins, which is out past the car lot out there. If you remember, we had in our budget to repay and resurface that portion of Veterans Memorial that's in such poor shape. But when we started into the project, found that that southern half was not within our city boundary. We approached the city of Truceville, and they have since sent us a letter that we received last week indicating that they have no opposition to us moving forward with voluntarily annexing that portion of the roadway. So the question is, if it is your desire to proceed with that, then we can have the city attorney start that process for the voluntary annexation.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's a smart thing to do so we can actually then officially get the road done.
And to screen board off that, I think it's, because there's been such controversy and that kind of back and forth over the years, I think it's good to solidify something now. So I agree. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve, to proceed with the annexation of a portion of East Veterans Memorial Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I got a free one.
Take it. Give it to one of them.
Motion made by Alderman Deloitte, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries five two.
The other item I have for you is just to let you know, staff meeting with Eric Maniga of MoDOT in regard to the potential on North Highway 47 to utilize the MoDOT right-of-way for sidewalks. And what we found from that is there is really not a potential to be able to do that. You have a letter at your desk tonight that summarizes the results of that meeting. And basically, there is not enough right-of-way area there when you take into consideration that there's a utility easement there, that there is a really significant ditch area there. So there simply is not enough right-of-way area there existing to be able to put sidewalks in that location.
So, understanding that and the fact that they didn't want to work with us to get those sidewalks, how do we handle the liability of this situation if someone gets hurt? I mean, it's not our property, and it's not our highway, and somebody is going to get hurt, if not killed, on Highway 47. So does that become MoDOT's liability?
If it's a dangerous condition that MoDOT's aware of, they could have liability in the situation, generally speaking. You know, you have, the state will have sovereign immunity in situations, but if somebody were to get hurt and then a subsequent issue happened, then they probably would be held liable. If it's a dangerous condition, they'd be required to address it. But the city would not have liability for inquiry.
So since we know it's a dangerous situation, someone actually has to get hurt before?
Well, for MoDOT, and we, you know, if we, you know, you could put pressure on MoDOT by sending them a letter saying, "We believe this is a dangerous situation based on the traffic pattern," and that may pressure them on a liability standpoint to do something. But it doesn't appear that they're going to be willing to do anything right now or work with us to do it. But we would not have liability, no, because that's theirs. I mean, they're.
That's why you said that someone has to get hurt for them to understand the liability of the situation.
Sometimes that's what it takes for government entities to understand liability, sure.
Well, I think we need to send a letter then.
I do, too. I think they need to be aware higher up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you could just, you could lay it out, like, how much traffic it gets, there's, you know, a natural, you know, ingress egress from this area, you know, from North 47, and, you know, just making you aware that you think it's a liability situation. They'll pay attention to it. Whether it'll make them do something.
No, but I think they need to know.
The person is documented.
Yeah.
If somebody then got hurt, if a citizen got hurt, Alderman Holly, then, in a situation like that, that letter would be something in their records to say, "Hey, you guys should have known about this."
Yeah, I think we need to work that up, Terry.
Okay, we can do that. We will have something in draft format for your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next item in the agenda will be hearing from zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack An.
This is a site plan approval request for Fairgrounds Villas, SP-PUD 91A, proposed plan unit development. On June 18th, 2015, a request was filed for approval of a preliminary site plan for plan unit development with senior citizen apartments to be located at 608 Fairgrounds Road. Property is Zone C3 Highway Commercial. Discussion regarding the approval of this project was postponed during the March 15th, 2016 Board of Alderman's regular meeting after the public hearing was held, and the applicant and their engineers here this evening, if you have any specific questions for them.
Go ahead and state who you are.
Sure. For the record, I'm Bart Quorman with Lewis &amp; Beatty Surveyors and Engineers. I also have with me Mike Marty with Allied Construction and Carla Potts with NACAC. And here to answer any questions that you may have. Since the last meeting, we've done some revisions to the site plan to address some of the concerns. There should be a letter from the fire department taking care of the off-site sewer situation. We addressed the density situation that we're just slightly under eight units per acre, where code was allowing up to 16 units per acre. The fence along Fairland Circle has been moved back to the 20-foot building line, and the one along Fairgrounds Road has been removed from the encroachment. And we've put a fence along each of the patio areas along Building 3. Another thing we've done is we added Evergreen Hedge on the south side of the property. We've increased our handicap parking spaces and added additional trees throughout, and then also added a little pavilion gazebo in the open space area.
I didn't make the last meeting, wasn't able to be here. I know we've discussed several times some of the concern about turning the buildings that are facing the fairgrounds, so the front of the buildings would face the road. And that's not something that developers want you to do.
Correct. And part of that is if you turn a building around, then we have an off-street parking situation, or you have a rear access. And the layouts that they're addressing, basically, you'd have to come through the laundry room then on a regular basis. And so, so that's, that was something that didn't seem like it was reasonable, as well as the front of the building looks pretty similar to the back, I mean, as far as roof pitch and stuff like that. So, so it was not something that, you know, our applicants would describe.
There was some discussion about some density issues. You don't feel like that the density is still too high, even though it's within the code? I mean, the code tells the maximum, it doesn't tell what's appropriate, it just tells you the maximum. So you don't feel like the density issue is a problem?
No. If you look, I mean, we got almost 20% of green space area outside of the islands and stuff around the buildings itself. It's eight units per acre. And they're only two-bedroom units, they're not three-bedroom units. So there was plans earlier, and I know the board probably didn't see them, but some concepts for this property earlier in the process, we're looking at a lot more dense units, but this is what we ended up with.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, let's go back to, it looks like you did a lot of work to deal with green space, which is great. I would personally love to see some more trees put into that gray area marked right across where it says Fairland Circle, because there's only one home that faces the project. That home is basically sits on a very wooded area, so now we're looking out into a project in front of our house that's not wooded. So, there could have been a few more trees put into that. Are you seeing what I'm talking about?
Well.
I know you got them along the sidewalk, but.
Right.
You got an area marked park, open space, point to 11 acres.
Yes.
I think it would be, if you could put some more trees in there, I think that would leave, when they look at that, it would kind of blend a little bit more of the character in there.
Okay.
Has everything been done on the project and approved by the city? Is there anything still outstanding?
The sewer, the sewer system, I haven't seen no plans on how the sewer is going to run off the lot to the city.
And those will be submitted with the construction plans, but we've negotiated with the fire district.
I understand that.
And got that sewer laid out, so.
But typically, don't we see the sewer plans before we approve the site plan? You're saying no, city crew's not saying anything. Typically, what do we do?
The last one we did, we had plans for the sewer, but I'm not familiar with the last set of plans we did.
Well, just in general, when you build in the community.
I believe Harbor Place had their set of plans for the sewer system, how it was going to run before I signed up.
As general, someone builds in the community, don't we approve the sewer before we approve the whole project?
Well, yeah, we need to know where the sewer's running, absolutely.
Right.
And in the, and in the design of the sewer. Because there's a couple of things that's going to be a factor in this. We have an engineering study heading out farther that might be a factor in how the sewer needs to be ran. So after we get the sewer plans, I'm going to have our city engineer look at it and see if it can be a factor in what.
Why aren't there sewer plans already? You've got all this, where are the sewer plans?
Here's, here's the situation, for not just this development, but any development, is, when someone wants to come in and do a development, they need to know if they're going to get approved before they invest additional resources into coming up with engineering drawings completely to detail. And so, when we submit a site plan, it's a layout and everything like that, and, but to actually finish the engineering project, there's more to it. And that's what we call a set of construction plans. So you have a site plan process that lays it all out, and then there's a final bid document set, a construction set of plans, that the building department will review as well. So, in this case, we've, we've, we've basically done the preliminary layout for the sewer, and actually, I mean, I got sketches in the car almost done, but, and so that, we knew where we would go on the fire district property to tie into the city sewer. And so, with the city easement and what we had to submit to the, to the fire district was, was the easement location. And so, it will be in that location. It will meet DNR specifications and city specifications, and that's, and that's the typical situation for a lot of projects, is you got to get approval, because no developer, whether it's this developer or anybody else, wants to spend that much money on whether or not they may even be able to come into the city.
Yeah. But let me flip that on you.
Sure.
If we approve this.
Yes.
And go about your merry way.
Yes.
Then it becomes our responsibility to make sure that your sewer plans are adequate to meet what we need from the city. So then it becomes our problem to make sure that it's adequate and not yours, because we approved it.
Well, I would think that you wouldn't give building approval from staff until those plans are submitted and reviewed and approved. And that's, that's a staff review and a DNR review. So you have two checks and balances in that situation.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you this, that we go through that process, you go, we say, "Okay, tonight, subject to that," and then you send that in, and our guys say, "No, this doesn't work."
Right. And then the developer has, has, we have to find a different solution, because obviously you can't build those buildings without having sewer.
I guess, I don't remember us going through the process where the sewer hasn't been signed off by the city staff prior to our approval. Is that, I mean, am I wrong about that, or is that historically accurate or not? I mean, you're telling one story, and I'm trying to find out if that's really the history.
Normally, we at least have the proposed location. If, if not, like Bart had mentioned, the actual construction plans for building it with the exact percentages and grades, but you have a general layout. When they first came, they, they didn't have anything just that they were applying to work with the fire department to gain access through their property to design the sewer.
Right.
And now they've shown where their proposed easement's going to be, but it does not show where they anticipate the manholes being, or what section of that they're going to want the city to assume, as far as the easement going to be granted to the city, or is it going to be maintained private? We really don't have any of that information, just the general layout of where they're anticipating going through to make the connection.
Is that typically what you have, though?
Normally, we would at least have where it's going to connect to.
And that's what you have, right?
We, we don't have anything showing the actual sewers going there. We have, we have where he's showing his proposed easement location.
And it has.
General area.
And when that easement's procured, the sewer's going to fall within that easement. And that's, that will be the case.
So let me ask you a question. So if we were to approve this tonight, which we can't because there's no drafted ordinance, we have to, this has to be in the ordinance form, so it's going to take the city attorney to draft an ordinance, and we approve. So let's say we tentatively approve this tonight, and we say, "Okay, you've got two weeks to come up with this, because when the ordinance comes in two weeks, if it's not there, I won't vote for the ordinance." Is that a reasonable position?
I, I think that's reasonable. I mean, I, like I say, I know I got, I got preliminary drawings sitting in my car on this, so, I mean.
I mean, is that a reasonable position to take? Somebody, a lot more experience, a lawyer, would you check your argument out?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just want to say one quick thing, is I think the difference here is, if you, it sounds like guys got in it with the sewer upgrade, or there may be a sewer issue, where if you approve it tonight, and it just goes to a ministerial task of staff approving it, if they're within the confines of the ordinance, we have to approve it, we have a duty to approve it. If there's, could be an outside sewer issue that may force us to make it a condition or the conditional use permit for the sewer approval for the conditional use to do the development, then in that situation, you know, you don't want to approve it. So I, I think you absolutely can say, approve the ordinance being drafted up, have guy look at the sewer, make sure it's not going to cause an issue for whatever he sees, and then you guys can approve it, and that's going to put the city in the best position, because otherwise, we would probably have to pay for that upgrade if you approved it tonight without taking the sewer issue up first. Did I confuse everybody?
No, you clarified for me.
Would you explain how you clarified it for you, so you can clarify.
Because what, in my mind, if, if we're okay with everything, which I'm not saying that I am, because I still have some other concerns, if we're okay with, with the sewer, with making it contingent upon, then we haven't approved anything until.
You are in a better position as a city to control any additional expense that guy sees that's outside of our basic parameters of the code, not approving the ordinance tonight or approving the conditional use. You could give a preliminary appeal, but like you said, Alderman Ock, it's not official till the ordinance is approved. So you would, you wouldn't want to do it, if there, if guy has a concern, you wouldn't want to do it if you had something that would have to be included in the conditional use permit, approval. You had some type of upgrade or some type of thing that needed to be done that you would want to put on the developer, otherwise, it would just fall on the city if you approved it tonight.
So technically, it makes no sense to approve it tonight. We can certainly indicate.
Yes, exactly.
Once those plans come in, and they're approved, I, you know, pending what other people have to say about it, you know, from the standpoint of the sewer issue, not any problem approving it. So, I mean, preliminary approval, subject to the plans, we really can't move forward.
It's really not an approval, yeah.
Your decision not to do the engineering and turn it in is really slowing the project down, it's not us.
Right. But if, if the project is voted down, then there's no point in.
That makes sense. I, I.
It makes sense. But I'm going to give you.
Yeah.
Give you my indication, subject to what Tony has to say, other issues, that I would be favorable to support the project if there's no sewer issues. But that's, that's just me sitting here saying it, and you have to know, I can change my mind in two weeks, you have to know that the ordinance has to be drawn up, you have to know everybody has to approve it, too. So, I mean. Go ahead.
No, I want to go back to the, the walking trail around here that has one tree around that whole thing with, you know, this is senior citizens and.
Are you looking at the?
I'm looking at the concrete sidewalk.
Page, page two?
In my, like, where it's got the, am I on page two?
It's the one with all landscaping on, essentially.
Yeah, landscaping.
It's got the landscaping on the front of the buildings, but if you're looking over at the, like, on the sidewalk, the walking trail.
Right.
That goes around the retention pond.
Yes. We added four big trees along that bench on the south side, also in line with the, with the evergreen, landscape buffer, compact evergreen hedge. Along there.
Because I'm, I'm missing something that.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, so I wasn't showing any of this. Okay.
Yeah, that was the one that was simulated not even so ago.
Okay. I just think that there needs to be some shade there.
Right. And we, we did that, but there's a bench there, and we lined that up, we lined that, and we put the trees on the, on the south side of the sidewalk there, because, because of the shadows, that way it would actually be shaded more than putting them on the north side.
Yeah, yeah, I, then I was looking at the wrong version.
Your point, there's no trees around the sidewalk that goes around.
Right, yeah.
Everything's around, right centered at the bench.
Right.
It's like they put in three trees by the bench.
Right.
And that's all, so if a person walked, there would be no shade there.
Correct.
Walking that, that's your point.
Right. And the reason why we did not put any around the pond itself, if, if you understand anything structurally about, about ponds and lake dams that you're not really supposed to have other than grass vegetation on those, because what, what happened is, trees grow, roots, roots grow, trees die, and then roots rot, and then actually, that creates an avenue for water to leak through the dam, so.
I mean, that, that's common sense. There's nothing on the west side, though. I mean, think, you know, if you look at this big open place, I think is what Tony's saying.
Right.
I get you on the dams.
And we didn't know how many trees from the last meeting, there was no specific, so we, we added some.
I mean, just common sense, if people are walking around, they don't want to be walking in 100-degree heat and blasting on the sidewalk, but, but it doesn't, that, I don't think is holding us up. No, but I just wanted to address, because I.
So, what I, so what I'm hearing is, is some of us would like to see a few more trees put in, in the walking area, and I'd like to see some trees put in that space you got in our park, it's across the street from Yoli Resin that faces it, and we thought, you know, so, I mean, I think that's, shouldn't be that big of an issue. And then we just have to figure out, what do we, I'm still confused about what are we doing on the sewer. It's the same guy, where you say to me, "We feel comfortable with you giving tentative approval for the project, then we can vote on that," but I'm still confused. The lawyer didn't help, sorry.
But you also need to know that there could potentially be three different board members at the next meeting.
That's true.
That's true.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Okay.
So, so let me ask you, what, what should we do? Should we tentatively approve this, subject to sewer coming in and require you to draft an ordinance?
Can I ask?
Or should we just wait?
Guy, what is the concern you have, if you don't mind, Alderman Ock? I can maybe get a little bit more clarification.
The upgrading that we spent money on. The upgrading that we spent money on, heading towards the highway, and all that plan for other lift stations and other development on the north side...
If this project will affect that?
I do not know. I mean, I don't want to say it will not, until I have Gonzalez look at it, because they were the ones that did the original design.
Bart, do you understand where he's coming from?
So, the goal, my thoughts were, if they plan on running a forest main up through there and tying onto that line, it's going up to that field, that might be a fact of what side main they put in.
I would say, Alderman-Hock, that, you know, it sounds like the general consensus is approving it, that the density's not an issue. Giving preliminary approval to it tonight, it's just, I would not do it as a roll call vote, just an I or a nay vote, is going to give them an idea of whether or not it looks like the other issues are resolved. So a preliminary approval is not going to be binding, it's not going to be an ordinance, it's not going to be something that they can, because, you know, it would be, what I would suggest is, you approve me writing the ordinance if you want to proceed forward. But I do think that the sewer issue is a big enough issue for staff, they need to get the plan prior to the actual approval of the ordinance and approving the project, because I want to make sure that if there's some type of upgrade that's needed, that that cost is on the developer because of this project and not on the city with the plans that we already have. We want to pass that cost. If we don't, if we just approve it, that will be our cost for that sewer line upgrade, because we'll have to provide them sewer. If you do it as part of the conditional use preliminary and review the plans ahead of time, we can pass, if there is a cost, on to the developer on that project. So approving me to draft the ordinance will give them an idea, I think, as far as whether or not they're going to get approval. I'll get the ordinance ready, they can get their sewer plans and, you know, immediately to Guy to see, is it going to, is there going to be an additional cost that then we need to bring up to you guys to consider as part of their conditional use permit approval?
You're saying we just need a I or a nay, not some...
I or a nay for me to draft the ordinance if you guys want to move forward. Bart, is that sufficient for you guys to have an idea of whether or not the project's going to be approved?
That's sufficient, I think so. The other thing, past the sewer is the trees, how many more trees do you want to be placed in there? So, I mean, because it's...
I mean, you didn't, you didn't put anything in the park area, so something else would be nice.
Okay.
I'm not going to tell you how to landscape, unless you want me to sit here with a pencil and X and O.
Well, we're going to put three trees in the parks and open space of .11 acres, just north of Building 7A.
Okay.
Okay? In the .08 acres that butts up to the city of Warrenton's water tanks there, we're going to add four trees along the walk there, okay?
Okay.
And we're going to add three more trees along the walk headed towards the gazebo.
Perfect.
All right?
Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
So if I make a motion that we authorize the attorney to draft the ordinance...
No motions can be made, it's just an I or a nay.
We can recommend.
Well, how do you I or a nay?
However you guys want to do it, it's informal, if you guys want to do it as...
We're doing it informal, instead of a formal roll call.
I don't know.
Therefore, everyone on the board who's in favor...
We can ask him to.
Everybody that, everybody in favor of having Attorney Christopher Gavell proceed on with drafting up an ordinance, say aye.
Isn't that what I was just about to say?
Or nays, we don't do a roll call, though, any nays?
I'll get that ready for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to back Bart?
Mr. Secretary, to the addition of...
Add a tree. You go, Bart.
Thank you.
All right, now that we're past that, the next item on the agenda would be hearing from Economic Development Director, Michelle Swinter.
Mayor, does that last vote also include the conditional use permit approval?
No.
Does it include the draft an ordinance for that, too?
Yeah, I'll draft an ordinance for both, Jack, I think it's inclusive.
Okay, just making sure we need it. Sorry, sir.
All right, Michelle.
Item on the agenda is billboards. We currently have two billboards, one Eastbound and one Westbound, and we are looking at renewing the contract for those billboards again for next year. We went out to bid, we requested bids from several different companies, and did not receive bids other than from the pourleya.
Do we pay for this, or is this paid by the tourism commission?
Tourism, tourism.
Tourism, and so, have they looked at this?
This is part of their budget criteria.
It's part of their budget, so, okay.
Any other questions, Collins? All right, entertain a motion to award the billboard bid to pourleye?
Pourleye.
Pourleye.
So is this just for the two?
This is for one on Eastbound 70 and one on Westbound 70, so it's for two billboards. We'll be going with billboard 157E and billboard 75W.
Just what's highlighted in the red is what you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay, and is that the current location?
Yes.
Like in Wentzville, or not Wentzville, Forest Dell, there's one?
Forest Dell and, yes.
Okay.
There again, motion on the boards, do you entertain a motion to award the billboard bid to pourleye?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Dyer, signed by Alderman-Holly, if I get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman-Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman-Holly?
Yes.
Alderman-Castily?
Yes.
Alderman-Nock?
Yes.
Alderman-Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Anything else, Michelle?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be hearing from our finance manager, Gabrielle Curry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only item I have is the accounts payable for the month. I'm requesting approval for the amount $292,121.29.
Any questions, Collins? Entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $292,121.29.
So moved. Second, you.
Motion made by Alderman-Hock, signed by Alderman-Holly, if I get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman-Holly?
Yes.
Alderman-Castily?
Yes.
Alderman-Nock?
Yes.
Alderman-Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman-Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Fred needs to scoot up to the front row. He can't hear me. Fred.
Next, next, I think he's ignoring you first. Next item on the agenda, hearing from the Chief of Police, Greg, howdy, Michelle.
That was a complete ignored job.
I know, I didn't get to do it.
The only thing I have is the approval to hire Michael Ryan Kavanaugh as a police officer. Very excited about bringing him on board, he's going to do really well.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve to hire Michael Kavanaugh as a police officer at the, at $17.23 an hour with start date of 3/21/2016.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman-Delloy, signed by Alderman-Dyer, if I get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman-Castily?
Yes.
Alderman-Nock?
Yes.
Alderman-Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman-Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman-Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be hearing from our city clerk, Melody Ruh.
Local Government Week this year is May 1st through May 7th, and this year, to celebrate the employees that are office staff, on Monday, May 2nd, they'd be able to wear a sports-themed shirt, and it'd be an extra jeans day for them. And for those employees that don't do the extra jeans day, let them have donuts for breakfast. And then on Friday, May 6th, we'd have the employee luncheon at the grounds and maintenance building.
Come on, I'd be disappointed if it's not there.
So the office staff can't have donuts?
Isn't this something management...
No, go get them, too, because, you know, we have the, they're all intermingled, so